Hello and welcome to Next 2.0 on WQLN NPR. Next is produced by the Public Voice Media. I'm your host Marcus Atkinson with guest host Mark Blunt. If you want to know more about Next 2.0, go to Facebook and like the page. Follow us on Instagram at Next 2.0 Erie. There you can keep up with upcoming show promos, events, see and hear clips about what's next for our communities and our democracy. Thank you so much for tuning in. Locally, I think one of the same things that we have in common as the the national narrative is there's a lot of revitalization going on in our hometown of Erie, Pennsylvania. Having lived in Atlanta and traveled to a lot of different cities, and especially when I was in a role of an executive director of an organization that did a lot of neighborhood revitalization. I've had an opportunity to visit places in Ohio and Pittsburgh and different places in New York State that do this kind of work. There's a lot of similarities. And so for various reasons, there's this somewhat of a renaissance happening in different cities. Erie is no different. Today's guest, Mr. Curtis Jones Jr. has had a very unique vantage point to everything happening here. I'll let him unpack everything in great detail, but everything from City Hall to his current role right now with the Chamber of Commerce, his role in ministry. He has seen Erie, being a child of Erie as well, graduating from our school district here. He has seen Erie from a perspective that very few people can match. And that's a good thing. And so with all this going on now, we want to try to unpack this with Brother Jones today and just kind of get his perspective on what's going on in Erie. What role should African Americans be playing with all of this work that's happening? Because that vacuum is ever present. We watch what's going on. We always ask the ever, the ever popular question of, well, where do we fit in in that? You know? And so we want to talk about all of that. So with all of that being said, Curtis Jones, welcome to the show.
Man, thank you very much, Marcus. It's a pleasure to be here. I think we did something like this about 15 years ago.
Oh, man, yeah, it was.
It's been a while ago.
Okay.
It's good to be here.
Excellent, excellent. And Mark, thank you for joining us as usual.
Hey, you're welcome. Also, I want to add to Curtis' resume. He is a business owner and he has a great restaurant. The name is what?
Chipper Seafood in Southern Fusion. And I will just, full disclosure and full transparency, it is family owned and my parent, my dad, he, because I still get a whooping. But no, yeah, it's, it's, we're right at 1023 State Street. And thank you for that, Mark. We're excited about the growth and expansion happening there as well.
And I'm excited about the, and I'm excited about the catfish sandwich.
Yes, sir.
In that place, that catfish sandwich is off the chain. Curtis, talk to us a little bit about your journey. Start with, um, I want to say you graduated from East.
No, actually, I ended up going to public school until at the end of middle school and I ended up going to Mercyhurst Prep.
Gotcha.
Yeah, my, uh, which is a funny story because I came home from Wilson after football or basketball practice one day, eighth grade. And my mom said, hey, you're going to prep. And I was like, I ain't going to prep. I ain't, you know, girls at prep, I ain't going to prep. And she said, no, you're going to Mercyhurst Prep. And I never even knew what that was. I'd never even heard of that school. But some friends of the family, children went to another school that heard about it. And long story short, ended up going there. And it was a good, a good move for me. It worked out for me personally and maybe for another talk, why some of those personal stories and relationships really helped me to be here today.
Got you. And I know I led the show talking about your role on city council. I want to say you termed out there. You ended up being there, what, 12 years?
12 years. I did, um, I won the primary in 2005 and took office in January of '06. Did 12 straight years and was blessed to be able to, to do that term limited out. But then, uh, another council member ran for state representative. He had one year left on his term. And so I was asked to put my name in the hat for that. And so I say, I got 13 years, the baker's dozen of 13 years to, with the privilege and opportunity to serve on city council.
Talk about the genesis of your desire to serve. Public service is not for everyone. And, um, you know, a lot of people consider it. It's always an interesting thing to me because you have some people who just insist that they want to be a public servant. They aren't very good at it, aren't very effective. And a lot of them go straight from not doing much in the community to wanting to run for public office. You know, you were a very effective public servant at, as evidenced by the fact that you continue to serve in different ways occupationally. Where was that born? When did you decide, I think I want to seek some sort of political office?
Yeah, so, um, so I went to Teal College is where I graduated from. My degree is in political science and theological studies are my two areas that I studied. So I always knew I wanted to be involved in politics in one way, shape or form. But I really thought I would be, you know, like a policy wonk, like just, you know, run campaigns and, and help create policy and write, write legislation or something, right? And so, um, came back home and what I, and I was involved in ministry. So I was a youth pastor with my wife at the time. And, uh, we were doing a lot of stuff with kids and youth and believed in education. And so my first entree into electoral politics was actually a race for school board director. And I think it was 2003. And, uh, so I did not win that race as far as getting enough votes to take office. But I did get bit by that electoral bug. And, uh, the opportunity came, it was a very high, highly negative. That's a good phrase to say, but it was a very tumultuous time in local politics. Um, uh, mayor was, had some struggles while he was in office. A mayor before, uh, before, uh, Joe Senate, Mayor Philippi, uh, had some struggles and, and a lot of infighting and things there. And the civil or the lack of civility in, in elected politics and elected office and in, in government was really high. And I said, man, I could bring something to the table. Um, and so I put my name in the hat and, uh, and ended up winning in the primary and, uh, beat a long-term Democratic incumbent. Uh, shocked the world, as they say, at least the Erie world. And why that is significant, I think, is because I really just always wanted to help my hometown. I remember being in high school, my, my senior high school report was, I want to go away to college and come back and make my hometown better.
Not too many people say that.
And I, and I, and I didn't know how that would work, but then, but I guess it's working out hopefully, uh, pretty well.
Mark, during, during those years, you were an entrepreneur in the downtown area during a lot of these years, were you not?
Yes, at the time, yes. That was, uh, early 90s. I want to add something else about Curtis. My first time meeting him, one of my first times meeting him, he came into the meeting. And usually this was, uh, how politics was brokered back then. You know, you had a meeting and you kind of get your supporters and they kind of had a caucus and come out where the candidate Curtis came in and said, whether you with us, with me or not, I'm gonna run. And I seen the faces of the older crowd when he said it. And another thing I remember him saying, he said he was Bishop's best student, or Bishop Brock's best student. And I thought that was, I liked him ever since. And I called myself doing anything I could to, uh, support him at the time.
Bishop Brock was one of your professors at Mercyhurst.
Yeah, he was, uh, was so the second, my last two years in high school at Mercyhurst, he came in, he was an adjunct teacher. Uh, he was, uh, the advisor, professional and teacher advisor for the black student group. And I was president of that group. And, uh, yeah, we gave him a run for his money. And I always say that, I've been saying this for, next year, 2024 will be my 30th high school reunion. And so for more than 32 years, I've been saying this quote from Bishop Brock, uh, that you must be able to respectfully and intelligently articulate your position. And, and that's, that thought and that mindset and that quote specifically has helped me, um, in very difficult times because sometimes you want to yell and scream, fuss and cuss. But to be able to be heard, uh, you have to be able to respectfully and intelligently articulate where you're coming from. And that served me well. I appreciate Mark bringing up that, uh, that meeting because that, that is, that was a kind of a sign of where I was headed. And, and I had great respect for everyone in that room. That's why I went to that room. But, uh, as he said, and I was going to bring that up, but I'm glad you brought it up. Uh, and I, and they respected me for that. They didn't really get it, I don't think, at some point, but like this kid, a little cocky kid. Um, but I think there was a level of respect there at the same time. And I think it speaks to the importance and something that if I can jump in here and say, what that group represented was organization in our community. Um, it wasn't the end all in, in beginning or end all, but it was an attempt, and not an attempt, but a continuation of having a system where people can be vetted and people can be encouraged and strengthened and mentored, uh, that are, uh, matriculating through business, politics, education from and in our black community. We're missing that today. Um, and so we have a lot of rogueness, which is fine, except that there's no anchor.
Right.
And we need to anchor down. And I say that now that I've got a fuse under my belt, but I also understood it then because I listened to Ruby Jenkins' husband. I listened to Mel Witherspoon. I listened to Ms. Johnny Mayak. And I listened to the people that were older than me, uh, and experienced differently, but experienced things that gave me a foundation to serve on. Um, I, I guess one of the things I wish I, I wish I knew what I knew now when I was early. Because Mark, you know, you were there, like you said, from the beginning. And there were things that I didn't know I had the ability to move and maneuver. But now that I look back, I'm like, man, I could have did more. But that's the process. That's the part of the process.
That's, that's kind of what I, where I want to go with my next question. Because when, so now you're actually on city council. And like any seat, president, city council, school board, any kind of position of leadership, there is, if I get in, I'm going to do X, Y, and Z. And then there's, you sit in the seat and you have access to new information. You have access to new relationships. And suddenly the light comes on, it's like, oh, this looks a little different than what it looked like when I was running. What did Erie look like and the plot of Erie look like from the other side of that seat? When you not just got there, but got comfortable and started to really understand how things work?
Yeah, I, um, the, the, the model for our campaign was, uh, Curtis Jones Jr., city council, moving Erie forward.
There's a lot of that going around.
Moving Erie forward. And I think that's 2005. So there's been a lot of iterations of that in the last 20 years or 18 years. Um, but it was, I, I'll be honest, I think we were on the verge and a great level and opportunity for renaissance and growth. It, but almost like we just didn't know it, if that makes sense, or we had thoughts of it. And then when I, I got into office, um, well, and let me say the reason why. Because we were, there was so much infighting. There was so much, you know, a lack of civility. I mean, we had public officials threatening to take another official outside. And one was a man, one was a woman, and he gonna take her outside and all. I mean, it was crazy. Um, but it maybe it was like the craziness before the calm. Um, because sometimes it has to get worse before it gets better. And you have to, I hate to say bottom out. And I felt like we bottomed out as a community. What I walked into as a 28, almost 29-year-old elected official was, um, with a new administration. Uh, first time that four, um, excuse me, three African Americans were elected to office at the same time. Mrs. Ruby Jenkins' husband, Dr. Lonnie Gatlin and myself. Now, there are other people appointed, but the first time there were three elected in the same election, um, historic. Um, but we also walked into a million dollars worth of bills on the fifth floor. Like, there's an old ha ha funny story, but there were bills that weren't paid because of all the craziness going on and again. Not here to cast expersions, but just the reality of it is. And then what happened was under this, that first year or two, police fi, police officers were laid off, firefighters were laid off, parks department. Every department was almost slashed and halved in the city. And the mantra became do more with less. In other words, y'all ain't getting your jobs back. And so we got to figure out how to function like this. And so what I saw on the other side was that we, similar to being a candidate versus an elected, being a citizen or part of the citizenry, uh, versus being a decision maker that had more information was night and day. And I had a lot of great ideas and thoughts. And I was, if I was on city council or if I was the mayor, I would. And then you realize that some of that stuff we talk about is not even legal. You legally can't make laws more stringent than the state law. So all the things we talk about wanting to do, you feel like, you just can't do that. Then you learn that you're one of seven and it's a majority rule process. And then there's certain things it takes four votes, certain things it takes five and certain things it takes six. You know what I mean? And so you have to begin to learn how to listen. This is what my, hopefully a strength of mine and I try to put it into practice. Listen more than I talk, believe it or not, which most people don't believe. They always think, you always talking. But I listen a lot more than I talk. And I started learning and building relationships. Black, white, been there a long time, just got here, just like me. And people started liking me, so they told me stuff they didn't, they didn't tell people they didn't like. And so I started to see that relationship building was key. It was pivotal. Um, and again, um, what it looks like on the outside is totally different than what it looks like behind the desk. Last thing I'll say about, well, another thing I'll say about that is we were one step away from Act 47, which is, uh, city municipal, city or municipal bankruptcy. And at that time, no other state or, excuse me, no other city or municipality in the Pennsylvania Commonwealth ever had come out of that position. Like, there were groups in cities or municipalities in there that were in, uh, Act 47 for, for 20 years. And so it was like a, a black hole of bankruptcy for municipalities. And so we went through a process and did a lot of hard work in, um, with that administration, the Senate administration, I keep it 100, um, really did a lot of good work with the council to right the ship. Um, didn't really get to the point of propelling us forward, but it kept us at least from sinking.
Yeah.
And, um, and I think what we see today is like other communities. When I was in college at Teal College, uh, we went to Columbus often for football camps and all kinds of stuff. And back in mid to late 90s, Columbus was starting out a renaissance of their own. And so you go to Columbus today, it looks totally different than it did in 2000 or in 95 or 96.
Top 20 cities for African Americans, that caught me by surprise.
Yeah, and you think about Cleveland, I was in Cleveland a lot. I mean, the Renaissance in Cleveland and the many, and Pittsburgh. So we can name those cities. But what I'm thinking is that it, it started years ago and all the little pieces had to begin to line up. I think where we are in Erie today is that a lot of the pieces are beginning to line up. The problem is, is that every, in my opinion, is that everyone in every people group is not at the table or isn't getting their part of the, not the pie. I don't want the pie. I want the ingredients so I can make my own pie.
Yeah.
And so I think there's some ingredients that some of us are missing, uh, that if we get it, um, and I'll say, I'll be very candid, in the black community, I, I feel like, and this is just me and if, y'all gotta edit this, you do what you gotta do. Uh, but as the black community goes in Erie, I can't speak for anywhere else. This is where I live. That's how the community goes. And what I mean by that is if the black community in Erie is operating at our pivotal and highest point, everyone else in the community grows too. Cause we're not going to be the top. So if, if we're going to be somewhere near the bottom or somewhere in, just keeping it 100, right? Um, if we're not going to be the, at the top and running everything, if wherever we are, if it's the best and we're elevating and we're growing, we're expanding, we have independence, but interdependence when necessary, um, everybody wins.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's just kind of something in my head. And so we got to start, we have, we have done, so I said all I have to say, we've done a lot. We've made a lot of progress. Um, I'm hoping that it will halo out. That was the old term back in the, uh, 2000s, earlier 2000s. It start downtown and halo out, right? In development. But then it's kept going back down and then never really haloed out.
The trickle down theory.
Exactly. And so, um, I'm hoping that we'll see more of that expanding into the broader community. Um, and, and really what it's going to take is us doing it, us as those in the black community, allies, supporters, actually doing the work.
Yeah, I, I want to play off that a little bit. Mark, because I don't know about other cities. You may or may not be familiar if you're listening to this. The role of neighborhood community centers have, has been significant, at least in our upbringing. You know, Mark, talk about just the impact of community centers. Before I go back to Curtis to try to tie these things together.
I, Erie is unique in my opinion in that asset, right? Right, that, that facet right there. In the cities that he mentioned prior to Columbus, Cleveland, even my hometowns of Masland and Canton area, it wasn't dominated by the nonprofit centers. And they didn't carry the message or they didn't lead the charge. They was with the charge, but there was already some economic and political basis there. Here in Erie, you're Paul, you have a legacy of Paul Martins. You have Alex Thompsons, you have Ben Wiley's, you have Bobby Harrison. And in that, the city had to rely on those talents. Our community relied on those talents. And to this day, I feel like those nonprofit people set the agenda for a lot. And whether that's good or bad, I'll let you all decide that. But what I do say is setting an agenda and it's setting a pace. It's, it's like whatever they deem is the priority, that's what the priority is. And sometimes I think that holds us back and sometimes I think it moves us forward. Because I have to commend the, uh, the neighborhood centers when it came to the ARP money and, and people like Gary Horton, people like Bishop Brock, people like, uh, Ga, uh, let's see, Gerald Blanks and, and those that got together and behind the scenes and kind of like did some things with the ARP money. Michael Outlaw, I would say that in the mayor's office, those type of things. But however, I think sometimes where, like Curtis said, the ingredients. I don't necessarily think that Denny or those guys like that know what the ingredients is for economic development all the time. They might know what it is to make their center prosper. Or they might know what it is socially, but economically and educationally, I don't know if, if that was the right formula to get to where we have to go.
Mm-hmm. That, and that's a perfect setup because that's what I want Curtis to kind of help us tie together from his perspective. I look at everything you just said, Mark, and the impact that these neighborhood centers would have on our childhood. I've often said for those in our age demographic, if you have an appreciation for this generation in Erie, then you have to give homage or pay homage to the neighborhood centers because by and large, they helped raise us along with our parents. I look at the transition now though, Curtis, and I see the rise of neighborhood organizations. So let's go back to what you're saying about neighborhood development and whether or not they had the ingredients. And there was, there was no R West Bay Front when I was coming up. There was no Best when we were coming up. I mean, you know, Best, Best had some decades under their belt. You know, you've seen the rise of Sisters of St. Joseph's East and West. And now you've got East Side Grassroots Coalition. The impact and then the rise of the Boogie Plan that we can tie in. But the impact of these organizations versus the neighborhood organizations. Now that there is a renaissance, how much is the presence of these neighborhood organizations either, um, incorporated or pushed out the voices of neighborhood centers? And, you know, is, is there a balance that needs to be struck? Are neighborhood centers being left behind? Are they, what, just what's your take on that whole thing? Because it was so smooth. It was almost like, you know, a cruise ship. You can't see it moving. And it felt like we went from, these organizations really weren't impact players in community to almost overnight they existed. And now everything seems to be running through these organizations.
Mark, I mean, what a, a beautiful and accurate, in my opinion, description of what happened, right? So, uh, you talk about, you know, the, the Ben Wiley's and the Mr. Denny's and, you know, uh, all these men and women, you know, in my, my childhood, I'm jokingly saying that, I'm a little younger than these brothers. Um, but, uh, like the Booker T, like Dorothy Lockett's and those folks that were running those centers, you know, rest in peace to them and Ms., you know, Bernice Williams and those folk that kept us in line, right? Um, it was a different time in that the funding that went to the, those organizations and centers was community neighborhood. Cause that center was the epicenter, along with whatever churches, was the epicenter of every neighborhood.
And had their finger on the pulse of everything that was going on.
Finger on the pulse of everything going on, uh, in my opinion, of my experience. Um, and what happened was there was a shift. And I was getting, I was coming into office really when this shift, I think, really manifested. It was probably happening before, where that funding for those nonprofits went away dramatically. I mean, it was, it was easy. It was every year. It would hardly even had to apply. It was just, you just got this X amount, X amount because you're doing good work. And then all of a sudden, these anchor organizations were being defunded, minimally funded, having to really question or answer questions about what they were doing. And not that that's not important because, you know, transparency is important, but they were doing significant work for generations. And what happened was the funding minimized. And at the same time, and Mark, both of you will know this, um, groups like, uh, ideas at the state level, like Main Street projects and, 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 um, neighborhood funding programs kind of took a rise in our community. And so those began, here's follow the money, as old folks used to say. Um, the money stopped going to the Booker T, to the MLK, to the JFK, uh, you know, to even the Boys and Girls Club type organizations. And it started going to the neighborhood organization. That's where the money began to be funneled. And the process was done so smoothly, it was justified by saying things like they, um, our community centers didn't have the infrastructure to, to be able to take this state or federal money in and track it properly. Uh, you don't have the institutional whatever. Wait a minute, we've been doing this for 50 years. Like, I don't understand. And so it became, again, our West Bay Front, Best. And it's not a criticism, it's a reality. They are the products of that environment and that shift in funding. One of the first ones, again, would be, uh, the Sisters of St. Joseph, neighborhood network in the, the historic Little Italy. Like, they were one of the first, if I remember correctly, one of the first neighborhood groups and organizations that really started getting funding. And the state felt comfortable funding funds or sending funds through those groups and not the autonomous individual organization Booker T.
Then I'll go back because this is kind of my intro into the community, so to speak. I was with a group under Dorothy Lockett, actually. This was my first group that I was with. It was called Path Square, People Attempting to Help. We were the first ones to bring back the garbage collection because at the time, the hood, 22nd Street was the revitalization spot. Richard Connor, myself. And if you look at that neighborhood now, that was the first rejuven, before Little Italy, that was the place where the rehabilitation of houses, the new housing had started. And we was going to start shifting a certain population out and we was going to build these new homes there. And it don't look like it did when I first got there. It, it doesn't look like that. Bishop built a park there for, for kids. That was one of the first areas. But what came out of that, it was Booker T kind of led the initiative. The neighborhood itself actually incorporated. We hired Rob Britton as a, uh, a community organizer, actually. We was the first to do it. We was the first urban area to have a neighborhood watch.
Center city, right? Center city.
Center city, we did that. And it seemed like who came out ahead of that whole thing was hands. Hands went from a minor player to all of a sudden hands went to a bigger model outside of the housing authority is hands. Whereas Alex Thompson really kind of begins this way early. If you watch what Martin Luther King Center had did, they, they own property. They build a senior home. If you watch what Ben Wiley did at GCAT, he had senior centers all over the area. So we were doing it. And I hate to say this like this, but it seems like maybe there was an undercutting of the influence of the centers. And the rise of the neighborhood, neighborhood groups was to counter that influence because of the message of the neighborhood centers. The message was going to empowerment of those individuals instead of someone else with a different face in that neighborhood.
That's true.
Who's in charge of the money, who's spearheading the thing behind the scenes. Not the face, not, we do the interview and they hold the checks. It's, it was, the centers were leading that charge. They had the money, but there was some type of wink, wink. Almost if you want to go back to, uh, what, primary healthcare. When Denny creates primary healthcare, look at primary healthcare today versus what Denny intended to be, a neighborhood. And what does NATO stand for? They was NATO at first.
Yeah, that's right.
And then they got into primary healthcare, they were a neighborhood group. They were united. But it was a slow dismantling of this, to slow down that movement also. So I got to say that to put the story in its proper perspective, almost a redlining of sorts.
Yeah, and I, and I, and thank you for that because, um, you're exactly right. I remember, again, being early in my time in public life, um, when they came through the neighborhood and revitalized and built all those new houses and homes. And, and, you know, the Erie, um, you know, the state P, what is it? The Pennsylvania Housing Authority and a Pennsylvania Housing Group. Uh, was it P? I forget the acronym, so many acronyms. Um, but, um, yeah, I remember that. And here, and you can correct me, and I mean that sincerely. There was an organization- There was an organization organizing and an organization formulated, but here's where I think the difference is. It was black, managed, run, facilitated, extended from those core places of community centers. And there was an autonomy in those spaces that that when you'd move and shift to a uh Best, our West Bay Front, a uh Little Italy, it was no longer run through those org- it was I would say a kind of more white run or more state funding run. And so the people who became the point persons didn't look like the people that lived in the neighborhood. Nor had connections with the ne- and watch where the neighborhood shifted. Center City, West Seventeenth, Eighteenth, it's a shift. So if you wanted to really run a uh uh one of those types of programs, the structure was there. But it went to where there was nothing and created it. You go down to our West Bay Front, that's that has actually kind of enveloped some of that MLK space. So they're following a track that was already established, but it was now being funded or it's, it's establishing something with new leadership that was already there, usurping what was already put in place, yet following its model and its track record.
What I find interesting is redlining backfired. Redlining put a certain group of people in a certain area. This area later is designated where all the government funds has to come and it just so happens to be these areas is by your most precious peeps pieces of property. Because Little Jerusalem or New Jerusalem or whatever you call it right there, that was us. And then if you go to the Lower East Side or whatever, that was the Polish, that was us, that was, that that was us. So from Twelfth, I believe from Twelfth North.
Yeah.
That's where you're, you can invest monies at. And it just so happens to be that's where your Booker T was, that's where your, you 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 got to say, well JFK, all them were positioned to be right there to get the funding to start revitalizing their neighborhood. But once that money really, really started to come, your hands took over. You you their funding cut, you just stick to basketball, you just stick to arts crafts, you just stick to what have you. And all of a sudden, you guys seem like you can't work together. Who did Hands work with?
Exactly, exactly. And you know what, th- this is, so if you're listening to this, pay close attention because these trends and patterns that have played out over the last few years is why I was excited to get you on Curtis and I know this is something that Mark is very passionate about, cuz we have these discussions a lot. You're getting a strong, strong sense, a firsthand account with some strong commentary as to how we've gotten where we've gotten. So taking everything you've said, now you've got the transition of these organizations, these groups and these people that are the natives of these neighborhood centers shifted to an advisory role. You started to see the rise of all of these advisory committees where miraculously, we need the faces that are indicative of these neighborhoods. We need the faces that have grown up in these neighborhoods. We now need these voices to come in, speak into the plans from an advisory standpoint. Because now we have money being funnel to groups and individuals who don't have a connection. They don't have a connection to what's going on with the violence, they don't have a connection to what's going on with the poverty. They don't have a connection to people's misgivings about shots and 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 um immunizations when COVID hit. Suddenly, you need the connection and so here's, here's what's real slick about that. We will hold on to the checkbook, but we need you to give us guidance, how are these people thinking? Talk about that transition because now that we're here, I'm like, wait a minute. How did we get in this role of solving the problems of neighborhoods? Now all of a sudden, the checkbook is somewhere else, but you're still coming to us for intel.
Man, listen, here here's, it's so funny, I just had this uh conversation with someone the other day. And again, everything that I say, I mean, uh and I'm very clear about that. Uh also wanna say that I'm not hating on anybody, like if if there's a gap, you fill it because our community needs to fill it. But watch this, but don't think that you created something that's new. And again, Daria Devlin, very good friend, and we don't say names cuz if you say an organization, you know what it is anyway, that's not shade. Great job, put a funding stack together to remodel Wayne Middle School and it's the, you know, ECAT and you know, uh Erie Center for Arts and Technology and that's wonderful. And but before even that was happening, remember when it was still Wayne and they put the medical center in there? And people were acting like that was new? That wasn't new.
And it was very successful.
It was, as it should have been, cuz there was a void that needed to be met in that portion of our community. But it wasn't new. What ECAT is doing is not new. It's what the Booker T, MLK, JFK did organically, naturally, for generations and years. My, when I, my doctor in in do- in primary healthcare, uh doctor and dentist was in the corridors of the Booker T Washington Center. I mean, that, I mean, that's all that, you know, and and we come out of there, then you go into the WIC office across the hallway. Then you go upstairs to the administration offices and then you go into the into the gym in the second floor and there's a classroom up there and there were, we were doing class, after school programs on the on the loft. We had lunch pro- everything that is provided in an exam, I use ECAT as cuz that's the newest example. Right? But it's, it's a rehashing of an old model that was successful. And the Booker T Washington Center, MLK, JFK can't get the money that ECAT can get because, but but all ECAT is doing is do, is rehashing what our community centers organically did years ago and modeled. And so I struggle with that, to be perfectly honest, but I, but I had to stop struggling and realize, okay, what's the difference? They figured out where the money's coming from, how to work it and put some things in place to bring it to them. How do we get that same infrastructure? Here's the spillover respectfully, maybe I'm saying too much, Mark, you got me out here talking crazy. But but if you think about Gary Horton, a mentor, Uncle, Uncle Gary, all of that. The idea and him and others with Burton School. Who did they bring into advise? Daria Devlin, who they should, because he, you know, we're talking about some of those similar pack uh stacks and financial stacks and how you get these pet tax credits, she did it well, whatever. My problem is, and I'm not saying it's happening, but I'm just gonna throw this out there. I don't want our black leadership to lose the authority and power and influence of these projects because they don't know or don't have the resource connection to the funding. Dar- and and I love Daria and I told her this story, it's no big deal, we friends, we go right back, we didn't argue, disagreed, fought and all that. But D- Daria Devlin should not be the spokesperson for the Burton School Project. In my opinion, unless there's some things I don't know about, and I will always preface that, I don't know all the story. But that was the brainchild of MCIC Group, Gary Horton and and others and from the community. But why is it, again, Savakio Park. He's spilling the tea, Mark, y'all never talked this much. But in my opinion, but if I say this, Mark, before you jump in, um and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong and if I, I'll come back on and say, oh, I was wrong, I'm just, I was missing form. But why is it that James a- as the president of MCIC this year hasn't been, in my opinion, but let me, that's not.
Chantel, here's the president this time around.
She is now, yeah, he is now, right now. So James, Chantel, whoever, but so I wanna flip it and not say it from that perspective. I wanna say it from this perspective. Why are the people who are connected to the Erie County Redevelopment Authority speaking more for these projects in certain venues than others? And part of that, and that's not a criticism on either side, except to say a lot of it is because of funding. Who has access to the funding, who knows how to navigate the funding? And I won't get into the detail of why I made those statements, bec- but I, it's from my perspective of why are you talking too much about something that wasn't your idea? I'm struggling with that. And I think a lot of it is because of funding and and people who are releasing funding, who, people who are in quote unquote leadership positions, their comfortability with other people will help these projects move faster.
I also think it's the path of least resistance. And when you have
Appreciate that too, Mark, you're right.
Person that connect, it would be like behind the scenes of, let's, let's keep it a hundred. Behind the scenes of our Bay Front, the face of it, to me is Ms. Battles. Behind the scenes, the check of it, that's not her. I'm gonna say with MCIC a little different, but Gary's fought a lot of, or Mr. Horton. He's a friend, family of mine, so I like to say Gary. He's fought a lot of battles. And the options is kinda narrowed on how do I move from point A to B? After all these scars of trying to do it yourself, you you go the path of least resistance. And the blueprint is Little Italy for right now. Little Italy and watching how the our Bay Front is i- is going. Whereas when we tend to make moves ourselves, it's still the elephant in the room is we meet a lot of resistance. It's, I don't know, maybe if you had, maybe if you, maybe if you did this this way. It's still that fight of control. And yet, when you you say something profound, I wish maybe out of necessity, one day we can come together and pool our resources together and just do it. Because shame on us if we act like we're not in a better position than what we were. Instead of celebrating building, and I'm gonna say this, and I'm not knocking it as a progress, celebrating building a bank in our area, we should be creating our own credit union. Because that's more important in my opinion. We have people that made some mistakes as young people, that need a little help, that need a better car loan, that need better credit card, whatever. And we have the resources that we could pull together and give them that type of opportunity to get them restarted. Why are we still casting checks at these? Those type of things, I'm talking about we've left common problems. I don't believe people wake up in my community worried about, we have food deserts. I I just don't. I don't wake up worried about whether I got fresh fruit in the, in the, in the, in the thing. That's not our biggest problems. It's opportunity, it's a destructive mindset that's pushed to us. It's our schools. We have, we have a deep problem here that is all tied together and we have, we have to really address this instead of addressing or moving where the bag is. And that's my problem with the nonprofits. They're moving where the bag may be and that's not necessarily what the community miss- necessarily needs. But when the white community at large looks at our community, those are the loudest voices. And then for some of them to even back, and I'm not saying none of our, no, I I haven't heard them back this, but this food desert one is is the one that's so insulting to me. I haven't heard anybody say, well, I can't make it to the Walmart. Or I can't ma- Lucky's is all over the place. I don't think you wake up, Marcus, I don't think Curtis family is waking up and said, hey, fresh fruit. If we don't have it, you can't go to college. We can't get the car loan, we can't get the whatever, we can't open businesses up. Who came up with these type of ideas? And that's what bothers me is who's pushing these narratives and who's narrowing our opportunities to get out of this situation that we that we could get out of ourselves.
Man, this is getting deep, this is exactly what I hoped for in this show. Because this is, Curtis and I had kind of a snapshot of this conversation when, you know, we saw each other not too long ago. This is a discussion when I run into people on the street, at the bar or what have you. And it's so hard to articulate this when you don't see it from both sides, right? And for people that have that unique dual perspective, you know, and can articulate some of these trends, it's always good to try to get this out here. Now asking you to put this chamber hat on, cuz we haven't even gotten to the chamber yet. Putting the chamber hat on, so now we have, speaking for the African American community, you've seen a pivot because of some of these trends we're talking about. You've seen the rise of MCIC. You've seen the rise of of the Burton Pro- Project that was born from the mind of Brother Horton. You've seen the rise of East Side Renaissance, you've seen the rise of Black Wall Street, you've seen the rise of Opened Eye. All of these organizations are starting to bubble up. Some neighborhoods, some programmatic, whatever the situation is. And now you have made a transition to the Chamber of Commerce. The neighborhood centers are still in existence and now all of these new efforts are springing up that we've discussed and some that we didn't mention, Politically Erie County United. They have put forth a slate of elected officials, you know, multiple elections and have shown some success. People are shooting their shot. Does this represent a unique opportunity in the African American community? And if so, how do we capitalize on that as people are starting to pivot? And add on to the old that still is in existence?
Uh I I think, and I think that's great assessment, right? So city council have three African Americans, one Latino woman, first ever elected.
First ever elected.
Now, we had David Gonzalez, good friend of mine, but he was appointed.
There you go.
And so that's the history.
There you go.
And um and he didn't win the the reelection. Uh she she did. So you've got a majority of people of color, and I use that phrase for this moment, on city council. Go to the school board. Erie City's Public School Board, four, I believe, four African Americans on that board and five is a majority rules out of nine. All you need is one periodically, one other person to to one swing vote to move. You're pi- we're moving things, right? Legislatively, we're moving things. And so I think you you put that political, you have, you know, some, you know, Michael Outlaw previously in the mayor's office. You've got, you know, Andre Horton, the first, you know, person of color ever uh uh elected to county council or county municipality, any office um to my knowledge, right? So we've got people in position and we've always had some political, if I can say, you use Mark's example, political and nonprofit power. What we have not had active, in my humble, limited opinion, is nonprofit or for profit or money having entities being at the table for us. So let me, let me say it this way, less wordy. Black economics. What is the state of black economics in Erie? Right? What does that look like? What is the criteria? We can get into that. But for me, I think this is, this is where we are moving to, recognizing our individual individual economic power. But we have to then shift to what the collective economic power, here's, here's a, what I mean. Working at the chamber, uh yeah, gentleman coworker Sean, Sean Lyons, he's a data dude, right? I'm not that, I'm a talker, I'm a, you know, I got a vision from forty thousand feet high. He's like, no, you got an anchor down here. So he's going, and I said, Sean, how do we, can you look at some way to kind of assess and kind of come up with some numbers around what is the expendable capital within the black community of Erie County? And and sharper minds than mine, he he's one of those, starts looking at some programs and how's the national trends can and where he's gotten so far and he's not done with it. But he's gotten so far is that over ninety million dollars annually is it considered expendable capital in the black community of Erie County? In other words, when your bills are paid, what you play with. Expendable capital.
I'm gonna say sadly, it's higher.
It is higher and that's why I said we're not done.
Should be expendable, that's right, cuz we'll spend before we pay our bills.
Mark Blunt is bringing truth to the microphone.
And that's one of our problems.
That's a great point.
That's one of our problems. So even in that, even in that, we we we're not bankrupt of purchasing.
That's right. We're the biggest consumers, we're consumer minded. We're consumer minded. When you go to stores in predominantly black communities, people of color, non-white communities, the prices are higher. Where, because we we don't look at prices like that, because a lot of times, some of our resources are state given. You got the check at the beginning of the month and that's not an expulsion, it's a reality, it feeds that consumer mind. Or if you get food stamps, I was a child of food stamps before it was cool. Before the card. We had to pull out the coupon out the book and make sure the serial numbers matched in the store. The embarrassing food stamps, I had them, if, and not all of us, but I had them. If we're not careful, we will become so comfortable swiping our access card and not looking at the prices of things. We're overpaying, we're paying more in poor communities than affluent communities pay for the same product.
And I'm glad that you said that because when you go to inner cities across this country, it's no different than Erie. And you'll have these corner stores, corner store slash gas stations popping up all over the place. The thing that I have always been struck by is how it so often plays to the vices, the negative vices of that neighborhood. You will not go to the suburbs and buy a loose cigarette. You won't dig into the plastic container and buy a single cigarette. You know, you won't have the 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 container of single beers that are outdated almost every time. You know, you won't have the, the, the container of single beers that are outdated almost every time. I know that from merchandising back in the day for Coca-Cola, that are outdated most of the time. You won't see rows of, of the hats that I know that you all love to buy. Rows of all of these, these little items that they've just picked up on, okay, this is what poor people are buying. And it becomes this farmer's market, if you will, of all the things that we know you blow money on.
Yep.
Literally. To add to
And figure.
The overpriced.
Yep. And, and so now we got, this is that shift where we gotta go from nonprofit community, or excuse me, nonprofit work. And I may say this respectfully, even church work and even neighborhood community work to economic work. That's the thing, it's, this is not about just black folks, white folks, brown, Latino, all of that. This is about money. And why is it that there, why is it that, to your point, Marcus, that so many stores in our communities are feeding to those vices? But very few of them are black people or people that live in that community. That money is literally, in some cases, going internationally out of the country because of the individuals who are running those stores. And that's not an indictment, they're filling the gap. But guess what? They're filling the gap because we haven't taken our right position as far as the economy in our communities. So for me, to you going full circle back to your question in relation to the chamber, for me, I'm seeing the economic importance or the importance of economics more than just rhetoric. More than just, oh, it makes sense, you gotta, you know, black community, we need to, you know, our money only cycles through one time or half a time in other communities. No, that's real. That is real. And so when we start to see that, and I see that from conversations and meetings that I'm privy to be in with people who we would consider some of the higher philanthropic givers, business professional, they're making decisions that are non-emotional, they are economically based.
Absolutely.
We do stuff emotionally, that's why often isn't sustainable. And I don't mean that in a disrespect, I'm the same way, I had to control respectfully and intelligently articulate, right? So we have, my point is, I think we have to move to having real conversations about economics, about where does the money come from, how do we use the money, fiscal literacy? And not just basic, you can do a check account, that's important. But what about stocks and bonds and flipping and making money, making your money work for you instead of you working so hard for your money? You work hard for the money. That's over with. Nobody working hard for their money but broke people. Only people work hard for money is broke people. You know what I'm saying? And so people who understand money know how to work money instead of working for it, if that makes sense. I'm not talking about hardworking diligence, I'm saying you ain't slaving. And so economics, I wrote something on my board, if you come in my office, is BEAM, B-E-A-M. And, and I don't know where it's gonna go. It's the first time I said it in public. But black economics advances the masses.
And one of the things, that's one of the things Dr. King had always tried to get his adversaries to see. Where our struggle is every man's struggle. And as we rise, the tide rises, which lifts all boats. However, I wanted to narrow this down to the Chamber of Commerce role, because I, I kinda like, I was invited to a meeting before with their efforts to, I guess, recruit minority businesses or improve the climate in, in our area. And I kinda, I don't wanna say sympathize with Curtis' mission. However, I, I, I would advise, what the chamber has to understand is how we as an entrepreneur value the chamber. It's not so much, there was an initiative to get us to join. I didn't have so much of a problem to join, but the issue was why.
Right.
The why.
Right, the value, what's the value add for that?
I know why PNC would do it, because you'll advocate for them. PNC, they will see tax breaks, they will see credits, or they'll see something that's fighting for downtown now that you're gonna be part of, this Bayfront, you're gonna be part of this. You're gonna get the loan for construction, you're gonna be, you're gonna benefit. It behooves you to have a strong Chamber of Commerce. But how does True Clothing, what do they do for True Clothing? What do they do for RB Wiley Charter School? I'll, I'll name that, we're economics. What do they do for Crenshaw? What do they do for Mainest A+? Okay, we can get together, we can have our great meetings and, and all like that. But in the meantime, it has to be, the buy-in has to be, what's in it for me? Besides a, a subscription?
Right.
Or a membership, okay, I'm a member of what and why?
Yeah.
You know, it, it has to be something that I feel like is fighting for me. And I'm not saying he's not, but I think the mission is putting the cart before the horse. I think their mission, in my opinion, is financial literacy or how to improve the conditions for growth so we could get to a certain level of wanting to be a member of the Chamber of Commerce. So we could value that.
And so I'm going to, Curtis, allow you to take us to the finish line on that very thing. And I think you've given us segments or pieces of it already. Your overarching short-range goals for your role in, in the Chamber of Commerce. Mark outlined all of the key questions I know in my mind in terms of, well, why join the chamber? Cause I've heard and seen a lot of that myself. What are your goals in this role? Knowing that you have limitations, you are one person, and there's a whole machine around you. But what do you want to accomplish in your time there?
Well, I, I think, um, before I say that, I'll say what in the last, I've been a part of the chamber team or been working for the chamber at the chamber since July of last year. And what I will say is that when they, when I was hired, they got everything that they got, um, when they hired me, right? So everything we've been talking about, they got all of this. Um, and we've had some knockdown, dragout vehement, vivacious fury-filled conversations and over this last year. So I think that's important to note. And I think some of what I've been able to do, and, and, and there's another African American brother, Sean Lyons, I mentioned, he's, as another black man, I think this is the first time two black people have worked at the chamber at the same time in like recent history anyway, uh, for any length of time. In particular, two black men. And so we are really, um, working to, to be overt and seen in the rooms, which is important. Um, but then also, um, for me, I've, I've kinda adopted the, uh, the mantra early on there is that I'll ask for, I won't ask for permission much, but I'll ask for, uh, what is it? Uh, don't ask for permission, but ask for forgiveness later. And so I, I didn't ask for a lot of permission for things, to be honest. I just started doing things because I thought it was the right thing to do. This is what we, isn't this what we wanna do? We wanna make people feel more comfortable, be engaged. And so some of the things that have been done, to get to the point, um, there have been more African American, black and brown people on the third floor of that building or in the Chamber of Commerce offices in the last year and a half than probably the last fifteen years, at the very least. Um, but does that mean anything? Yes, a little bit of exposure, but what does that ultimately translate into? Uh, which is, I think, where you're coming from, Mark, and fair, and where I'm at as well. Um, we're working to get more black businesses to understand. I tell them, I don't not here to, I don't sell chamber memberships. What I do is, that's not my job, they don't pay me to do that. I try to get twofold. One, the chamber as an organization to see the success and the need, see that the success and the growth and the expansion of the black economic engine in Erie, i.e. black businesses, black-run organizations are pivotal to the success of our region, period. Two, then that conversation goes to those black organizations to say, I understand that you have not, or have historically been disconnected, underrepresented, not felt engaged and not gotten why, why I should buy a membership, but I need you to trust me a little bit and jump on this with me because there's numbers, it's a numbers game. Right? And so you talk about PNC or the banking, they come in as, not just PNC, PNC Northwest Key, they come in as, as bankers. And they have banking things that they want. They have, so that you come in, you have, um, industry or, uh, uh, manufacturing companies and businesses. There's a, there's a cohort and a group of manufacturing businesses that come in and say, hey, this is what manufacturers need from the chamber. But I could go down the line, retail and, right? So at some point, maybe it's not that a true, true, uh, 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 true fashion in Liberty Plaza didn't get what they needed because they didn't, right? Um, uh, because there's no collective conversation, right? And so
I'm with you a hundred, a hundred percent, and I do believe you're a man for the job. It's, it's just the message of, again, they're more intelligent than what they lead to believe, are leading people to believe. Why are they silent on the ARP money of the county if that is their mission for black economic development? And they know Britain Davis withheld the money, went back on his word that was designed to spur black economic power. They don't need you or wait for you to say something. They should have said something, and then I could say, whoa, that's my ally. That's my ally, I could be with that. So it doesn't, it doesn't cost nothing to do that. But those are genuine steps to show me that there's a real change of direction versus the hiring of or diversity as far as employment. I need the message to change, I need the methodology to change. I, I need the attitude and the heart to change and be genuine about it. I know your heart is genuine, but I need the, the, the head to go that way.
And I, and I appreciate that, and I would echo and agree with that. I, I, you know, I may raise no punks out here, like, I agree with you. Because the truth of the matter is, is that, but here, here, here's, here's the piece, other piece of it, if I may say, and this is not a pushback at all, because I a hundred percent agree, that the message of the chamber and its leadership and its staff and its members, because remember, there's over six hundred members organizations, that how much weight that is? And that's seventy thousand employees. You know what I mean? So if we're pushing this right message that you decide, excuse me, you just described, Mark, here's the other piece. What I have learned in my year and a half is that what moves that organization like many others is strong voices collectively coming together for that constituency group. Right? And it is about money with organizations like that. And it doesn't cost anything to say something that you believe in, but it's the old adage of, you know, one president sold, uh, with Dr. King and some of our, uh, no, excuse me, further back, Frederick Douglass and some of our black abolitionist leaders, he said, yes, black people need this, need that, need this, need that, now make me do it. Now, to me, that's a challenge. I honor your challenge you put out there, and I wanna be a part of how do we get that mindset and that articulation of a message to change? But not just with the chamber. Because remember, the chamber, and that's, I'm not defending, but watch what I'm saying. The chamber, people think the chamber has money to give to groups. And my experience so far has been unless they hiding something, they asking for money just like other groups. Because watch this, the chamber is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. So guess what? What Erie Insurance has to say moves a lot because they funding some stuff, right? So not only does the chamber need to, and I a hundred percent need to enhance the message about black empowerment and black growth and our community growing together inclusive of all people. And, and, and I said, that's, that's how I said it. The way you said it was even better. But watch this, when do we hold Erie Insurance accountable? Keep it one hundred. When do we hold the Erie Community Foundation accountable? Not that they aren't doing things, but the level at which they're doing things for the black and brown community, for the non-white community, and I hate to say it, I don't know what right language is, everything politically correct or shifting. They could do more. And they're just as silent. There are other groups that have, that are the funders that are just as silent. So not only the chamber, yes, the chamber, but yes, other groups have to begin to say that, and we have to, guess what? I was at, I had to do a speech and I'll be quiet. Uh, there was a group that was running, doing the PR for some, uh, state project. And, um, they sent me talking points. I'm like, I don't do your, you sent me talking points? For real?
They don't know who they dealing with.
But watch this, because they wanted to script the message. It's not that Curtis couldn't come up with something, they wanted to script the message. And we have to begin to get engaged with these organizations at a higher level so that we can help determine and script the message. Because we might ask, I won't say names, but we might ask ex-person leader of whatever group to say something that they really just are ignorant as heck about. They don't even know what to say. And when they say something on their own, they, it sound weird.
Yeah.
We gotta get involved in more, uh, of these groups and organizations at higher levels, make ourselves known and help write the script.
Raising those
And raising
Those public voices. This is why the network is called what it's called, the public's voice, because that's always been the X factor in society, it's been the game changer. When the public raises his voices collectively,
Yeah.
Things move.
Mark, can I say, I know we at our time, but here's the last thing I was, at the end of the day, at some point, um, we, it is important for us to be as black and brown people, men and women of all hues, to be at every table. At some point, though, we have to begin to put the legs on our own table. We have to create our own table, be carpenters, be woods, uh, 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 blacksmiths and create our own stuff. Because at, at, as high as, even if you sitting at the head of the table, it ain't your table.
Right.
And so we have to create our own table so that then other people groups see the value of what we bring to the table beyond advisory. Beyond, but no, there are major financial players out here. Okay, we need to come and sit at, can we come to your table for a meeting?
Exactly.
And so I think that's the next step. So whether it's that ninety plus million that we're trying to tally up, what that looks like, how do we leverage that? But more so, how do we leverage a producer mindset and a, and a come-together mindset versus a consumer mindset in our community?
Curtis Jones, Jr., thank you so much for your insight and for giving us just a snapshot of your experience and your journey, we appreciate that. And Mark, thank you for joining us as usual. And thank you, the listener, for listening to us. That's it for our show today. Tune in next time for more discussion and analysis with local and national guests. Remember, next two point O streams on Fridays on all major podcast platforms and the fourth Sunday of the month at four PM on WQLN NPR, which is ninety-one point three FM. I'm Marcus Atkinson. Come and join us again so that you can hear about what's next for our communities and our democracy. Peace.